They would take the junkies, give them the rubbish and they go on disposing, discriminating. Once we find the junkie who sent them, what person could face the consequences of the actions? Alright, so we would be taking some very punitive action. We didn't want to order us rule, but we have to. Because at the end of the day, Mayor Town Council is blaming for all these mishaps, misdemeanors and all these things that are taking place. So we are not prepared to go any longer on taking the wrong stick of the road, end of the stick. The chips will have to fall in the middle. And I trust and I ask you the citizens to support us fully in any initiative that we will be taking to ensure that our town remains clean, our firepits, based on our budget for 2025. Those are the areas that we are focusing on, the drainage system, our firepits etc. I trust that you encourage those who are not here and especially those in absentia, the business community. Ensure that you talk to them, those of you who can influence them, try to influence them that they could do the right thing. So that our town can remain the town that we all would love, respect and honor for our children and grandchildren in the future.
I am happy to report as of 11:45 today, the constabulary, they were able to apprehend, yes, another little bug. That matter has engaged the GAN police force and particularly our police department here in New Amsterdam. That person, this hope will be prosecuted. And I want to invite you to follow the Mayor and Town Council's Facebook page, where you follow the workings of this municipality.
This is a very embarrassing, that council have been working hard to ensure that a certain nation every citizen are clear. So with all the resources that we have, we try to ensure that we serve the citizens. For over the past two years, we have been able to acquire four three compact trucks without a cancel, without our travel trailer that we use. We also have been able to acquire small facilities which we use after the service on the bridge. We continue with this over Garage Solid Waste Collection. We try to help each area at least in a two weeks span. I know you guys have been noticing the council have been around, that many places we face challenges when it comes to our new homes. So just to put it out there, in government, such a little job, we have a lot of vacancies for the Garage Solid Waste and new income markets of the city. If it's needed, we are so sharp when it comes to our union resources. So I've been working with two persons and one person for the Garage Collection we need. Outside of that, I'm encouraging persons with the buildings, of courses that are building, building additional expenses, bridges and these businesses about them. We may often face a lot of challenges for persons entering municipality or coming to submit their name in Amsterdam municipality. One of the many reasons where we need our building inspector visits so that we can ascertain that you guys have been through a correct and please you will do the right measurements and reasons have made for the drainage and the corporate entry machine. We also asking persons with the taxes. I'd like to say special thank you to everyone that corroborate taxes on the data to the municipality. I'm also encouraging businesses and our residents to please come to the municipality and pay the taxes. While the government agencies, we are asking for our taxes to be paid, most of them are outstanding from since 2016 for government agencies. So we're asking for those ones so that we can move more persons to Amsterdam and also pay our building capacity on the side. It is a vast and extended staff have been working in on the tremendous and terror foundations. But we are here today and joining us very well. So I'd like to thank each and every one of the staff who is quality and working towards the everyday. I'd like to thank each and every one coming here to the meeting and we appreciate that, we appreciate it. And you're waiting to hear your concerns. The compartment door, the compartment door inside the museum, our door is always open. The treasure chest compartment door is always open. There's some ways to the compartment door is always open. It's not that you're hard, anything you litter, you ask the citizens to be on the lookout for a little more. So there's a continuous and trend of persons just interfering with the town and it's becoming, have a nice sight to see. So we want to maintain a clean town, we are asking persons, if you can't even notice anything, just take a picture and once maybe bring it to us later to the municipality already have a part to play.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our meeting. Um, this afternoon, I'd just like to speak to you about some of the responsibilities and challenges that we have with the town here to part specifically dealing with drainage and drainage problems in the town. Um, us, we have with that, there's four points in which, you know, water is located from the town. So we have two quarters to give, um, and two to give the day. Um, members, we call, uh, persons using water at their homes. And those water actually, you know, go into the main water drain, then it goes to the secondary drain and then it travels to the, you know, up or down and it goes up to the, that's how it's supposed to be. Now, the drainage structure is solid, how it was engineered by the law, it's a gravity system. You think that the starting of the street, it hasn't been built so that, you know, once water came here, it blew this gravity and it goes to, you know, on the, get it done. Now, all time, the drain has the problem, something and the gravity system, you know, that they have to get clean drains across. Now, that is how, you know, something that affects the timing of the drains. Now, over the years, for instance, you own a second one, you know, we enter the company, everyone's building, everyone wants it. They have a part, it's clearly considered, everybody wants a second one. Now, this poses a challenge for us because when you're recovering your drains, you're unable to perform regularly. But maintenance, it's, you know, a very expensive, um, project that you have to, um, take in here at the council. And as the treasurer, when, sorry, to look at the article, I'm like that, we are very sharp. So at the moment, you know, we're, we're doing a rotten heart piece in getting all these drains clean. During last year, uh, some contracts were awarded for cleaning of the drainage channels of the town. Um, that was going to apply. However, municipality, we haven't, uh, oversight over those projects and we weren't able to, you know, find out where the critical areas that would need to be cleaned. Now, cleaning the drains one, you know, uh, we have tortoise streets just in the central, it's like something earlier. So that, that is, uh, tortoise coverers on the strand, we have a tortoise on the front. So if those coverers are not clean, especially not clean, then, you know, we are going to damage quite big, quite big. And that's one of the critical, you know, issues that we're facing. Most of these coverers are bought, um, either very, you know, suitably done, you know, the contractors, they just, they're moving infrastructure. So it's very difficult for us to bring access to them. And this is one of the main things that, you know, they need us in terms of drinks. These are sort of things that we have to address. Definitely, I look to the fact that we will create some meeting halls to arrange travel which you, uh, not concern with here. Hopefully, one of that project is completed, we will be able to, uh, to leave, fly away, uh, business hub and by extension, our streets.
In the south in the buildings in New Amsterdam, this is the young man behind all that is happening in his, with his area of responsibility, municipality.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to read from the 28th one as related to, because that was my presentation, uh, base one. So. While the South is where for that, uh, our Bible, G43, our Bible, it's the guide that we use. So not only to guide, this is not also to guide every, uh, developer. Uh, what I recognize lately, last year, the latter part into 2025 is that citizens are building without, uh, consultation. Citizens are building without consultation and that is deemed as a fine. Uh, how we went about that fine, the council sat at their statutory meeting and made policies. And any policies made, it must go inside with the 28th one. And so, uh, we would have recognized person would have done extensive work to the properties. Uh, while council embraces development, we're not here to block anybody's development. When we have persons come or found in contravention, we try to put them in compliance. There are some cases whereby we send notices to persons for them to demolish because it's not in keeping with the 28th one. So, um, I'm reading from the Municipal and District Council, chapter 28, page 416 and it speaks to new building. And this has to do with, uh, section two. Every builder intended or proposed to erect a new build or to make any operation in or addition to or to execute any work in regard to any building, which operational work will cause such building to come within the meaning of the town. New build, as used in the Isla Law, shall give notice, and I want to stress on this point, shall give notice to the council in writing, such intention or proposition shall specify in such notice the date on which we propose it or we can negotiate, um, to begin such process of erection or operation of other work. I want to pass explain what this, what I said, before you do anything, you must give the council a little laugh on this. You understand, this is what the law says, this is not what the mayor or the deputy mayor, Mr. Gali, who is building this sector. This is what the 28th wants to use to cover the town. Uh, I also want to read contraventions. If any builder engaged in erection or operation of or addition to any such building or any execution of any other work, shall begin or do any work to the building or other structural work in contravention of any of these files, the town should pretend that. When it is discovered, when it is discovered that an offense has been committed, shall give to such builder any offense to some conspicuous fire of such building or other work in notice in writing. So all you have to say, that happens, send notices, which we call, um, either subor or a demolition or depending on the nature of the work. So there's two arguments and dispute, but we try to avoid such because we want, you know, our citizens to understand. So I really applaud his worship, the mayor to have, um, this initiative because I believe information is necessary. And, uh, if persons don't know, um, we can penalize persons. But prior to that, myself and the mayor, we had this question last, we can, we did say that at our last head of department meeting. And we did say that we take the time, it's right for us to have, you know, a way whereby we can share to the general public, um, what is happening because some people believe, um, that it is okay because you're a property owner, it is okay for you to carry out work. I just write the law and the law is there to guide myself and that of the citizen. So having said that, I want to encourage all of our citizens, prospective builders, um, to visit the office. Don't receive information from your neighbor, we call your neighbor, can this guide you? Come to the officers, we are a technical staff which will give you the necessary guidance. Our office number is street 30469. You can call that office, um, from Monday to Friday, from, from Monday to Thursday, eight to four thirty. Um, on Friday, eight to three thirty. Uh, before I go, you may want to know what are the requirements of submitting a building application? So it's four registered plan, meaning that plan must be drawn by a registered draft, no? Four copies of that plan, copy of your legal document such as transport or a title. Let us say in event that you want to submit this plan, but you're not here, you can make some money in power for it. That document also has to be note rights of the high court and it must be in the current year. Meaning that if you want to submit a plan this year, the code will land on staff and you'll have the year name and whoever's in charge, they will, uh, staff on it. At this point, I want to let you know that, um, there is a new era submitting, um, commercial plans through our single rail portal. Um, Mr. Gali, but since, Mr. Gali, but since here, we would have done one application through the single application. Now, this is a portal whereby the government of the day would have decided to have application means submitted through the portal. We as a, in a community department, we were trying to, to enlighten our citizens as to how that process would follow. There's a lot of the same as the face-to-face application, but only everything will be done online. So you have to give all of your documents on a self copy, you bring it to us and we upload it same. We were given instruments to do that task. Um, if you want to do any fence, trade through, um, shed, replacement work to your property, such permission must be given from the office of the Mayor Town Council. There's a form whereby you come to us, that is for shed, uh, fence, bridges etc. There's a form whereby you will have to fill out and that form will be taken to our meeting. And then, I being the technical person will, um, inform the mayor whether or not your development is okay. Because when you come to me, I will have to carry out a thorough investigation and so let you know what are the requirements of the Mayor Town Council and then the council will do an inspection to verify what Mr. Gali is saying. So having said that, I want to thank you for listening and I trust that we can have a workable approach whereby every citizen you want to do anything, you can come and to the office of the council, thank you.
The floor is not open. As citizens, you have a voice. So I would like to get this aspect of our business meeting started.
Back to you. I am secretary of constituency seven, named Lee Laso of C, Denver, Wyoming. Um, from that fifth million, I'm hoping that Laso of C can receive some more nice working factory lights. And let me confess that see itself, there are two playgrounds which I think are being underutilized because of lack of facilities. So if some amount of facilities can be added, for example, um, some little size space where children can go and utilize them, it's going to be more effective because you would say you don't have much access to this situation. Other than your folks and you as well. Thank you.
This is for example, like simply how you answer that as well, you or me or a public administration, but it's all business. And it's time to see where, where is we come, it's one side. We have a quarterly meeting here with citizens of New Amsterdam, where I last seen some representative days. So I hope we will be ready, but action will be put in place. On that fifth million, I don't know much, but if we have a side of the table, there's some of the streets, prices cannot tie down. So we can have some street names and if we can have some traffic signs. Because if somebody comes from the floor, they would not know what is a one, three and the street is not a one. So we can have a lot better, you know, from those persons.
Um, I would like to comment on punitive action. punitive action is very, and the money spent on punitive action will be more effectively spent on any group of citizens. Um, because on the line for, there's your son. How the son has got to be dealt with or we won't address that at some point. And I think the Matt CIA has mentioned a solution for, to, to raise, uh, funds by offering, uh, to get, uh, the citizens of this town. And maybe who buy those bonds, very competitive investors. That should be a way of very quickly dealing with the underlying problem of the stuff. The stuff is essential and if the stuff are overrated, the citizens are called it.
So I'm from the right side, my name is Sam, and I'm a resident of 37th side, you know. My main concern is that I observe, observing that all the street lights, they can look at, just this street or that street. You have sign somewhere, but that is not, you have 37th side, you know, no street light. You have whole, whole streets, that, uh, for children, the lights also are not that bad, we have, yes, but I have not, I am. I don't think that I need to, I need my, I need my, I need, I need the, I need writing, all still, so we have to work, we have to work. That's my decision.
Thank you. The major company investing in, um, the Mayor Town Council, all the way up to, and it's, uh, on strike to give you the freedom to use what money the people who are investing in bonds pay you, you use that. The deal is always issue are, well, by this type of government. Another thing I'd like to mention very good is a great need for all councils to be respected for anyone, a great need for councils to be more guided and help rather than punish people. If we have a well of goodwill coming from the council, I think more people will be assured to be more, more.
We desire to expose enough of people, you know, what the citizens, my real belief in here is for it. A lot of here, that I think what, now, now, one of the council, I have given to council here. Even because I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. I'd like to remember the, remember that they were, and the regional officials, telling people to take a truck of course. Can we get it? We are looking for, but New Amsterdam has, the government center, president is here and next to the table almost the time, they have a gift of course. President saying he gives six, total of course. What's going to be here? I told him that one more, then I was coming again now. The same is the highlight, the reference that we have in the town between the council and the region. At the same point where they put this fight, the grass suffered. The region is required of the manhood of, that's the beginning of kindness, who will run, team, who will be done, who's that, the region. So this function of this, sort of one is one function, I think function by teams. I brought that on the pool several times, top of the top of the town, top of the top of the town. I understand that we do this in the quality. If you have some, if you never really jar so, we are making of that one. The fault that we put down as far as I understand, where the tide is high, it's ready. And the cost is, that's what they're for. I don't know who regulates, who sets when the function one, I know I spoke to a guy in the past here and I said, I think I'm not talking about the fault, who has the talent now? So I don't understand what goes on with it. Constituent reps, as far as I understand, should be working with the community services, get their issues, create the comment. This table runs with the community as well, this is the same, the reps are still the ones. I was hoping that we have, I refer, along with colleagues, we have a meaningful discussion of the town. But not, but the council is lacking, that's what I'm here, and I highlight to the citizens. Because people believe in the council, ah, they can, yeah, check and read, but they say nothing, nothing at all.
See, the, the, my, I asked, who can manage, set, what, what, what? What, what, nothing. And if you don't, you see, people want to check, you know, what's it doing here? They must see if you can, they're over here, they're like, right, right. They can't do it, they can't do it, you want to hold that, you want to do that, you can't do it. People should know these things, as I constantly in the streets. So yeah, I mean, I, I don't know. This one is really, like I said, it's such a, it's a, because you have to spend a lot, spend a lot, spend a lot of money. But people don't like that, if we have cooperation, sort of people like that. Yeah, we have more cooperation and understand where the lies are. It's not, it's not, if I stand, if I never somebody last, they will be, I can't, it's, 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 it's. Same, yes, same, I don't know.
We don't have, you know, a possibility of something else. Now, if we take those money, are we a special project that we're creating for the new, this one? Generally, the operation of the council business of, and so if we take that money, we'll not, you know, pay them back, pay them back again. So I, you know, it's a, I would use it, that specific project, I would monitor that, that we, that we, that, as a, one to, you know, register that for. To general words that we have to, on the day, you know, that's, I don't think we need to generate that, but, you know, so much.
So, so, yes, capital works. Yes, only capital works can be placed on substantial works in the second. So now these works that I like, I love, it comes, it will be placed on the substantial, only capital works. Then to Saint George, you have by Saint George, or then it's approved those works. So the one that was, we're saying that we have to go and so capital works, once they are approved, they will be, they will go.
Can you, can you reject it?
Yes, and the ones that we reject it and the substantial ones, council to have. So we must see for an eighty million. Nine million used to fund that, we see the fourth half of September. And when we completed that nine million, then other obviously means.
One more move is capital works. So those recommendations of street lights, street signs, drainage, right? Once those are considered as capital works, um, repairs the streets, etc. Once it is being approved from George, huh? That is how we still forward. Alright, so this fifty million dollars are going to spend at properly. Right, that is why in public transportation. Very good. So now that we would have completed, um, the business side of the evening, then for now to move forward, as the summer comes to them, it must never be for what an important role we play as citizens.